And I would ask that you stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You're wearing your chair?
I know.
I know. Get a wet's his phone or do you?
I sure do, don't I?
You do. Usually it's this little lip catcher. All right.
Okay, Norma, would you call the roll, please?
Yeah. Councilmember Tom Bagnone.
Present.
Councilmember Adri Sabinra.
Here.
Okay, got it.
Councilmember Steve Hudson. Mayor John Thompson.
Here.
Councilmember Ian Gillespie.
Here.
Councilmember Tatiana Murietta.
Here.
And Councilmember Thomas Shaw.
Here, but I've got to watch where I'm sitting and moving.
I know. Please be careful. We have a Cora mayor.
Thank you. Okay, the first item is Presentations, Item Three. The city will recognize Joseph Martinez for his quick actions and heroism by presenting him with a Citizen Life Saving Award. Chief, come on up.
I gotta take some pictures of you guys, okay? You can stand by.
Mayor Thompson, council members, we're here tonight to recognize a fine young man of our community. At the beginning of November four, November of November fourteen, fourteen-year-old Joseph Martinez, an honor student in his freshman year at Coolidge High School, was walking his dog in the Heartland neighborhood where he lives. As he was nearing his home, a neighbor, ten-year-old Evelyn Service, ran out of her house seeking help because she was choking on a piece of candy. Unable to breathe and only able to use hand gestures to signal that she was choking, Joseph quickly ran to assist her. Using the Heimlich maneuver, a maneuver that he had learned in school, he expertly performed the life-saving action, dislodging the candy and giving Evelyn the ability to breathe again. Joseph, faced with a life-threatening emergency, you demonstrated remarkable composure and bravery well beyond your years by recognizing the danger and taking immediate action but to perform the Heimlich maneuver. You succeeded in clearing Evelyn's airway and preventing a potentially tragic outcome. Your actions embody the highest ideals of heroism and compassion, serving as an inspiration to others in our community. Your quick action serves as a profound reminder of the difference one person can make. On behalf of a grateful community, we commend your extraordinary bravery and celebrate your life-saving efforts. Yeah, we have a, there's a secondary presentation that Evelyn's father would like to present as well.
Joseph, it's very nice to meet you. In my fifteen years of service, I have worked with a lot of people that I would classify as heroes. And being Evelyn's father, I would definitely add you to that list. A hero is not somebody who seeks recognition but steps forward and takes action when they're needed, and you didn't even hesitate. Me and a few of my shipmates put this award together for you. It's not much, but I want to read this one. Professional achievement in the superior performance of his duties while displaying extraordinary bravery through a swift response during a life-threatening situation. He displayed a remarkable presence of mind when witnessing a child with an airway obstruction. Without hesitation, Joseph immediately initiated the Heimlich maneuver, demonstrating both skill and composure. Joseph's selflessness and willingness to act in a moment of crisis not only saved a life, but also inspired those around him to recognize the importance of preparedness in emergencies. By his noteworthy generosity, perseverance, and devotion to duty, Joseph Martinez reflected credit upon himself and upheld the highest traditions of the United States Navy. Given this, Ninth Day of December 2024. This is the Department of the Navy GOAT Award, GOAT standing for Greatest of All Time. Right, so that's what we put together for you. Thank you, Joseph.
Well, congratulations, Joseph, and thank you. Next order of business is item number four. Presentation by the Disabled American Veterans, Chapter Thirty-Six on the Reefs Across America Program. I see that, I believe Ronnie Smith was supposed to be here, but I don't, that's certainly not Ronnie. You'd never admit to that, would you?
Mayor and council, my name is Doug Stinson. I am a member of the DAV and one of the vice chairs for the Reefs Across America as well. Really quick, DAV Chapter Thirty-Six is dedicated to supporting all Penal County veterans by helping them file their claims with the VA, ensuring they receive the benefits they deserve. And our mission extends beyond paperwork, providing assistance during times of hardship and offer vital resources and guidance to improve the lives of those who've served. With that being said, we're part of all of the veteran organizations have gotten together to support the Reefs Across America. A little background on Reefs Across America. Morrell Warchester from Harrington, Maine, owned a reef factory, and in 1992, he decided he had a bunch of extra reefs for some reason and didn't know what to do with them. So he made a few phone calls, and with the help of more people in his community, trucking company and others, they loaded up the truck with all those extra reefs, and he loaded up his family and made the trip from Maine to Arlington, Virginia, where they went to the oldest part of the cemetery of Arlington and began laying the reefs on the graves. And he did that until he was out of, out of reefs. After he got done with that, the outpouring of support from the community, of his own community and of people in Arlington, and the support from his family, he continued that program until 2005. Quietly, without really regard for anything, he would just go down and start where he left off the year before, lay out the reefs until he was done. In 2005, somebody took a picture of the reefs laying against the headstone with a little bit of snow on the ground and put it on the internet. And in today's words, it went viral. And he began getting requests constantly from all across the country on how people can help and/or doing the similar program at their own cemeteries. In 2006, you know, he couldn't send reefs all across the country for free. So in 2006, he sent seven reefs to every place that asked, and there was 150 locations. It was one reef for every branch of service and one for the POWs, so they could handle or hold a reef ceremony. In 2007, they established the nonprofit Reefs Across America Program and began delivering reefs across the country as people could. We were really fortunate that we had a gentleman that knew about it and brought it to the county. Fast forwarding to 2021, some of you may remember, I did this presentation to the council in 2021. It was the first year we had a reef for every veteran's grave at the cemetery. And at that time, there was about 2,500 cemeteries involved across the country. In 2022, there was 2.7 million reefs laid on graves in 3,700 cemeteries. Moving on to this year, we're up to 4,200 cemeteries across the country involved. And that sounds like a lot, but if you really look at it, there's 144,000 registered cemeteries in the United States. So it's less than 1% that's involved. Everybody in this room should be proud of their community because realistically, we have three in Penal County. It started here in Coolidge, Casa Grande, and Eulogium Dondon Board shortly after. So three of those 4,200 are right here. And like I said, we have about 950 veterans laid to rest at our cemetery at Valley Memorial, with the oldest going back to a soldier from the Mexican-American War, up to the modern-day anybody for the war on terrorism. So realistically, we should be really happy. The ceremony this year is going to be this Saturday, December 14th, at 10:00 in the morning. We'll have some breakfast out there prior to, until it goes, until we run out. But we're inviting council, all the public, and everybody else to join us out there December 14th to help us remember, honor all of our veterans with the laying of 900-plus reefs this year. Last count, we were probably about 30 reefs short, but I, I'm hoping there was some that was processed that they haven't updated yet, so hopefully we'll have all of the reefs for every grave again this year. So please, come out. I know several of you have been out to a ceremony in the past, and I think everybody would agree that it's, it's heart-wrenching and very fulfilling at the same time. We finish the ceremony, and then we, we lay the reefs on the graves with stating the veteran's name, thanking for their service, and moving on to the next grave. With that all being said, if the council would give me the obligation for about one more minute, I have a presentation I'd like to make. If Mr. Lopez, if you come up here for, and Mr. LaFia. This is from all the, all four veteran organizations in the community. A certificate of appreciation presented December 9th, 2024, to the City of Coolidge is hereby recognized with a deep gratitude for their unwavering support of our veterans and veterans organizations. Special thanks to the Parks and Recreation Department for their dedication to our patriotic events, to Mayor John Thompson and City Manager Gilbert Lopez for their leadership in honoring those who served. Your commitment to our community is truly appreciated. Without your guys' help, a lot of our events wouldn't be as good as they were and as good as they can be. So again, thank you.
Thank you, Doug, appreciate it. I guess we'll see you Saturday.
Yes, sir.
What time's Saturday, is that?
Okay.
Mayor, what's that one, 10?
10, I was gonna say nine.
Proclamation for Arbor Day, Tree City, USA. This, I don't have this in front of me when we started it. I know we started this when Bob Flatley was city manager. Ricky, do you remember how many, what's it been now, 20 years?
So it's, it's been 21, so this year is recognition, and coming up this April will be year 22. And just like I do every year, one quick mention, you mentioned our former city manager, Bob Flatley. This was something that was real important to him, so it's something we're, we're happy to continue sort of in his legacy, so.
Remember, one of the first trees they planted was the one right by the library.
Yeah.
Mayor Wertz was there.
Yep.
And it was a big deal, that was the only tree around in those days.
I think I was, had been at work here for about a week when that tree got planted.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah. I'm surprised he didn't bring one of his bulls with him.
Yeah.
He wanted to take his bulls everywhere. All right, I guess I'm gonna read the proclamation. Whereas trees are one of the primary quality of life factors that a city government can provide for its citizens, and whereas trees are a delight to everybody, those who grow them and those who simply look on and enjoy their beauty, and whereas our community trees must be perpetuated to provide the benefits of aesthetics, shade, energy conservation, noise reduction, and community livability, and whereas our forefathers, who settled in the desert, had the foresight and courage to plant the trees we now enjoy, and whereas the climate and special beauty of the desert southwest are valuable resources enjoyed by many and should be taken care of for the sake of our children and our children's children, and whereas the City of Coolidge has been designated as a Tree City, USA by the National Arbor Day Foundation for our commitment to improving the urban forestry program in our community, now therefore be it resolved that I, John Thompson, Mayor of the City, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 25th, 2025, as Arbor Day in the City of Coolidge and encourage all citizens to participate in the celebration and realize its importance. Okay, now we'll move into call of the public. This is the portion of the meeting where the public, if they have, if they want to address the council, they can come up here and please state your, your address. And you have up to, up to three minutes. I know you know, you're returning letterman.
I'm a what?
Well, you've done this before, Gussie.
Okay.
Many times.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Gussie Taylor, I live at 529 West Verde Lane in Coolidge, Arizona, and I just came to share some information with you. The Randolph community will be celebrating its 100th year. The start of the celebration will be on Friday, January 31st. It will be an event held at Central Arizona College from 5:00 to 11:00 p.m. This is a, this will be a fundraiser. So the price of entries is $35 per person or $60 per couple. Saturday, February 1st, it will continue in the community of Randolph between 10:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. And there will be numerous speakers there, and families come to speak about their legacy and the history of Randolph on Saturday. Then on Sunday, February 2nd, it will be the Praise and Prayer for Progress. It will be a spiritual with various ministers speaking on that day, and that's from 9:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. And just like for anybody that want, just come on out and be a part of, shared with the community of Randolph. And for Friday night's event, I do have tickets, anyone interested in attending that event. Also, I'd just like to remind you that on the Randolph story is gonna air again on Christmas Day at 6:00 p.m. Because the Randolph story was selected by the producers to be in a Best of 12 News 2024 show. It would be aired at 6:00 p.m. on 12 News. And she advised me that if you don't have cable, you can download the 12+ app on streaming TV and hope everybody is able to tune in. One of the, the, the story will be featuring Gussie Taylor and Ronnie Jordan telling stories about Randolph, so thank you for this space.
Thank you.
Mayor and City Council, Doug Stinson, change of hats, representing the American Legion at this point. Just wanted to let everybody know that the American Legion will be hosting the community Christmas meal on Christmas Day from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. So if there's anybody that wants to come in, they can come in and dine in, they can take out, or we'll deliver. So anybody that needs any delivered, or anybody that knows anybody that does, if they'll just call the American Legion, leave an address, and how many of the meals they need, we'll make sure they get delivered that morning about 11:00 o'clock. So, thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Well, but it's free, by the way. Forgot that word. Really?
All right, thank you. Okay, if there's nobody else, then we'll move out of the call of the public. We'll move into a public hearing to receive public comments on a proposed zoning text amendment to the City of Coolidge zoning code. Amending Article, and there's been a big debate on, is this nine?
Yes.
Yeah. Section 906 Industrial Solar Facility Overlay Zone ISC, conditionally permitted uses to battery storage is added and Article 9, Section 702, General Industrial Zoning District I-2D, conditionally permitted uses 22, battery storage is added. This is a public hearing, is, who's gonna do this, you?
Mr. Mayor, yes.
Okay, Gilbert.
Okay, yes, Mayor, council, if council members, this is a, when we first created the Industrial Solar Facility Overlay Zone, most of it was just solar panels. We didn't have the battery energy storage systems that you see today. So lately, they've wanted to put in, as a primary use, the battery energy storage systems. And so what this does, it brings them and places them in the overlay zone and also in industrial zone two, I-2, and, and as a conditional use. So they just don't go in, they have to come through a process, through the Planning and Zoning Commission, and make their case. And then if there are any things that, that needs to be added beyond what they're proposing, the Planning and Zoning Commission can request those things, like say a fence or something else for safety that they want to see, then that would be part of the process. But it places them in a certain place. Before, we had, because they were new and after the fact, we had nowhere to put them. We tried to, AES came to try to put one in down at, down south, and it was in an area that was ag. And it, it really, nobody liked that as far as, because it wasn't an overlay. So we heard it loud and clear that this should be in the overlay, that's the right place for it. And so that's why we're bringing this to you. We took it to PMZ, and they, they approved it and sent it to you with, forwarded it to you with the recommendation of approval. We had the support of Noah Hiscox and his team, the Concerned Citizens that we were working with, with the overlay, and they're in support of this. We may have some other things we add to it as time goes on to make it better. But right now, it places it in those two categories so that if somebody comes in and tries to put in the battery energy storage system as a primary use, those are the places where it could go, and that's where we were directing. The only other way would be if they, if they expanded and came to PMZ and yourself to expand the, the overlay zone, say to bring in a piece of land where, you know, 40, 80 acres for a battery energy storage system, that'd be the only other way. But right now, it would go into the existing, there are some places in the overlay zone that nothing's been built yet. And, and so there's not that many, but we included, I think, a map in the area of the overlays you could see. That's why it's important to have it come to you as a conditional use, or the PMZ as a conditional use, because that way they can look at it and determine if it's the right place or not. And I'll answer any questions you may have.
I do have a question.
Go ahead.
These are still the same type of batteries that we've talked about before, that have caught fires before, right? The same, this is the same type of battery that we're talking about?
It's, it's a lithium-ion battery, but they're, they've made a lot of progress according to the data they've given us. And they have internal fire suppression systems and alarms and everything else. It's not, I, I don't believe it's the exact same as the one that is in Peoria. That was in a container, and it didn't have any of the systems in it, so they've, they've gotten better. I'm not saying they're totally, you know, safe today. I know whenever we have something come in, the fire chief is involved with it, our building officials and stantec to look at them, space them properly and all that. The ones that we see out there in solar fields now, they're, they're in accessory use to those. So they're allowed because they, they store power of the solar array. In this case, we're talking about standalone battery energy storage systems that just want to come in by themselves and store power and then release it back. And so we needed to put them in a place where, where they need to belong. And from what I heard from PMZ and yourselves, the last time we had that other one, they said it was the overlay zone. So, because that's, that's, so we wanted to place it in the overlay. And this is what this is. Like I said, PMZ looked at it, they thought it was a good idea. The supporters, Noah Hiscox, David Neely, and some of the people that we worked with for the overlay, also supported it at the meeting.
So, I don't know, we have our attorney sitting here, and I'm kind of curious. We can't just, based on what, what we've talked about in the past, we can't just say, no, no batteries, right? At all?
Well, Mr. Mayor, it's already part of our code as a necessary use. So I mean, I think all we're trying to do is make sure standalone batteries are treated as the same as batteries that are in accessory use to a solar system. So we're just trying to be consistent with where these facilities are placed.
Well, I'm not opposed to being consistent, but I know over the years, we've been told a lot of times if we, if we deny it just across the board, then we, then we have the likelihood of being sued.
Well, that's a specific project that's coming before you. This is more of a zoning
Okay.
text amendment to your zoning code. So I think council has the authority to create the zoning code they want. But all we're trying to do here is just be consistent, because before they were always came in as an accessory use to a solar project. The last one that came before council was a standalone project, and I think that's what caused some concern at that time.
And Gilbert, what other projects besides, you know, solar field, would, would these batteries be utilized with?
They, they may be utilized as a
As an example.
Mayor, yeah, say you could see potentially them being utilized, and not in the, not in the capacity of, say, you know, Orsted, which is a billion-dollar solar facility and is 300 megawatts. You may see smaller versions of these on powering a manufacturing facility as a backup power. But they're small, they're not, they're not the same size as what you do for a utility company. So you may have them in, in a small manufacturing facility, you may have them as part of a data center for backup power. And then, and usually the energy or the batteries that are used in, in the data centers that we've seen are lead-acid, like the ones in your car, not the lithium-ion. Because they only have to be able to provide power when it goes down, and then they have generators that'll kick on and power them back up. So those are the places we've seen where these may be used. And then utility companies, of course, want to store power when it's available and then withdraw it whenever they need it, like in the middle of the hot day in the summer. So you're seeing utility companies like Salt River Project and Arizona Public Service build these kind of things through a second party. Now, if, if the utility company itself builds it, then it's, it's regulated by the Arizona Corporation Commission. But these are, are third-party that build them for them, and then they sell the power to, they have an agreement with that company, the utility, to, to service them, provide for 20 years or whatever it is. And those are the two places, the places we understand that would be located where we've seen them.
Okay, thank you.
I gotta, oh, go ahead, Tom.
Okay. I think it's important to note that there's no acreage added to this, that we're talking, this area that we're talking about right here. It's the same as a solar overlay zone, so. In the, in the future, when these come before us, are they all going to be voted on? Do we take a vote on each project separately as they come in, as long as they fall into that overlay?
Councilmember Shaw, the, if it's, if it's in the overlay zone, if this passes, it's in the overlay zone or I-2, they would apply for a conditional use permit. The conditional use permit is, only goes to the Planning and Zoning Commission. And then they can provide input as to what kind of safety requirements, or if they want a fence, or if they want certain things on the site. If, for some reason, say they turn it down and they want to appeal, then it comes to council. But only during appeal on either side. Generally, a conditional use permit stops at Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay.
That's how far it goes.
Okay. And the one thing I would hate to see is that one of these battery users would come and want to locate six feet from the, from the line of the the ending line of the solar overlay zone. I just, they, we just need to be considered of all the neighbors and how far from residences, et cetera. These, this particular facility would be located at. These, this particular facility would be located at...
Councilmember show, that's exactly why we, we put it in as a conditional use, because P and Z can turn something down that's, that's not compatible with surrounding land uses. So we didn't want to allow it as a, as a principal use, which means they can put it in. We wanted some control over it, and so that's what P and Z will have over that.
And that gives you that control.
And it gives people the right to speak, you know, their impact on the, on their, on their land, their property. So they have a right, they can be heard during that process.
Okay. Yes, first off, when you say that they said that the suppression systems and everything, they've come a long way, so is that the battery people that are telling you this? Or is this an independent third party? Or where are we getting that information from?
Well, it's, it's just the data that they provide us with, the fire department also looks at that. I know they've, they've, they made it better. I'm not saying they're totally foolproof, of course, but they have evolved over time, you know, so they're, they're, they have more safety measures within the system, the batteries that, that we're aware of. And they do get a lot from it, from a...
Well, it gives, it's my understanding that when you talk about, once these, once batteries catch fire, you know, they have thermal runaway. And the only way to stop that, as an example of what happened out with Nicola, is to dump sand on it and smother it, because water just keeps it pushed down, but you have to have sand to dump on it. So I don't know how well fire suppression systems will work. But I think mainly my biggest concern right now is if we have a battery fire, whether it, because right now, we're on the hook with everything that we have out there, that with the accessory batteries. And if we have a fire out there, and, you know, you have to babysit these things, and if they're, if we've got to, until they, until they burn themselves out or whatever, if we have to put somebody out there 24 hours a day, seven days a week until it goes, you know, that's going to tax our fire department, and that's going to tax our community as a whole. So I just feel that before, I don't know if this is putting the cart before the horse by going ahead and approving this, but we should have safeguards built in to where, before we go ahead and put this in, to go ahead and, you know, because I talked to Mr. Hiscox, and he told me, he said, he said, yeah, he said, well, we, our intention is to put in things later on, but if we go ahead and approve this tonight, and then we've changed, amended our zoning, and then we get a bunch of people rushing in wanting to put batteries in, and then we say, well, we're going to have these requirements that you're going to have to meet, and they're going to say, well, no, we, we, we put our application in before those went into effect. So then we're stuck with battery storage again, and we're, and the community's not protected. So when, how are we going to protect the community from the cost and the dangers of these things? And I, and again, I don't want to rely upon the solar battery developers, and they're, we've done a much better job, they're trying to sell batteries.
I think, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Bagnall, I think those are all good points. I think they're all good points for an actual project, and I think they're all good direction for the chief, the fire chief that's here. But I think in the CUP process, they can put those type of safeguards in place. City can continue to move forward if we want to develop a code for that, but I think Chief Dillon, is he still here? Yep. I mean, I think if you want to talk to him on those issues, those can all be part of the CUP process for a specific project. I don't think they have the right to come in and say, I'm not going to agree with these type of, you know, these type of provisions, because we didn't know you're going to ask for them. That's why we have major site plans and things like that. But I mean, I think we could ask Chief Dillon, you know, what his thoughts are, but I think he can actually put in specific requirements in the CUP that they would have to comply with.
Does it have to be specific requirements? Can't you add something to this motion, if it gets out for tonight, that says, and any other requirements the city requires regarding safety?
Right, yeah. No, it can be part of the, you know, the major site plan approval process.
The conditional use, the conditional use process allows you to add things to it. Like, say there needs to be a big pile of sand next door with water.
I still think we ought to put a block wall in front of all the solar, solar fields.
That's something we're considering to add, yeah.
And add that to the deal too, but, but I think that you could, you could add something to it that allows the city to do whatever they need to do. And then the chief could work on whatever it is, but, I mean, you know...
Would it be possible for us to go ahead and if we approve this, but also put a notation on the approval where it states that, you know, requirements are being prepared and will be retroactive on anything filed prior to those requirements going, being approved?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Bagnall, I think if you'd prefer, if you want to table it for tonight, we can set it up for our first meeting in January. I think we might want to hear from the chief whether we'd have those type of provisions to talk about at that time. I mean, it seems like it's a changing industry, so everybody's trying to stay on top of it.
Yeah, Mayor Thompson, councilmembers, one thing about the battery storage industry is, you're correct, they are looking to sell batteries. The utilities are looking to buy them so they can store energy and release more energy when peak times hit. It's an emerging industry, and it's an emerging technology. Everybody's familiar with what happened in, up in the valley several years ago where the firefighters got hurt because a battery storage facility exploded. That technology is so not even in use anymore. It has come a long way, and it's, it's still developing. One of the things that I look for, and I've been through several of these meetings with battery storage manufacturers and the utility companies, one, one thing that everybody gets confused about is there's fire notification systems and there's fire extinguishment systems. Okay, so you're correct, when lithium ion does catch fire, it starts doing a thermal runaway. There basically is going to be no stopping it. It is going to burn out. And what I mean by that is, a facility this size, there's going to be no stopping it. Now, if you had a lithium ion battery that's in your phone, yeah, of course, you just throw it in a, you know, bucket of water or sand, and it basically won't be releasing any more gas, but it'll still be doing the thermal runaway underneath the sand or the water. Nothing is going to put it out. So one of the things that we look for when I have these talks with these people is what kind of suppression systems that they have. Okay, so you can't use water, you can't use foam, you can't use any kind of chemicals to stop this thermal runaway. So a lot of people get confused about what a suppression system is. They've incorporated the technology into these batteries where what they do is when the system, the motherboard or computer system inside these batteries that's controlling how much power comes in, how much power goes out, when it recognizes a problem or a fault with that battery, what it does is it automatically isolates that battery. It cuts off all connections. So the other batteries will still be charging, that one will stop charging. Now, if it, the questions I've asked them is, okay, so you've cut, you've cut the battery, the power off to the battery, what happens if it keeps with the thermal runaway? Well, what it'll do is, each battery has its own disconnect from the system, so it'll just keep disconnecting the batteries as it goes down. If, for some reason, the entire unit, and there are 16 batteries in each unit, if all 16 batteries go into thermal runaway, it automatically disconnects that entire unit from the system. So that is their idea of a suppression system, because there is no, there is no known extinguishing agent for lithium ion. You just got to let it burn out. Now, you have, that's, and that's a great step in the technology. That's, it's huge. But it's still going to be burning and off gassing, creating toxic gases. That is unfortunately a fact of physics and, and this industry. But all of them do part of what we require when these battery companies come in. We do require they have notification systems. And these fire alarm notification systems are in every single unit, and they go to a master control panel onsite, which then automatically dials our dispatch center. Or some dial their dispatch center, which in turn contacts our dispatch. So then we'll know where it's at and what unit it is. Okay, so what does that information give us? Lets us know where we have a problem, and then we can get experts from that company out there to deal with it. Now, I'll let you know, right now, a lot of their, their mentality is, is if an entire unit is going through thermal runaway, or it's catching on fire, they're just going to let it. That's it. Because the thing is, is we don't have the capabilities, nor do most fire departments have the capabilities to deal with a, a large unit, that size of lithium ion, especially, and that's just one, you're talking about, there's some of these projects that have hundreds or thousands of these units in a particular amount of acreage. The, the technology is very safe, or it's getting safer, but the medium that they use to store this, this energy is the best that we have right now.
Okay. Well, just for, I've, I've been dealing with this stuff since 2015, and when I asked about the batteries, first battery stores that went in out near me, when I asked the developer next there, I said, well, can you tell me, you know, what are the safeguards? What, what are your plans if you have a fire? And they said, well, we, we have a really good system. I said, well, what is it? And they said, well, that's proprietary, we can't tell you that. So...
Good thing about it, they have to tell me.
For, for them to, you know, tell you, you know, everything's getting better and everything else, you know, I, I, I'm a little skeptical of that. I just, I just don't believe it. But, I mean, I, I do know that you, you go to the meetings, you're trying to keep up on that and everything else. But again, my biggest concern at this point in time is if we have one of these failures and we have the thermal runaway, we're going to have to bear the cost of the thing in order to get it put out and everything else and any cleanup. And all these different storage, battery storage and everything else, they're put into special purpose entities that are just for that thing, and it's not tied to the parent company. And we've got to tie it to the parent company on all these things. We've got to get written guarantees from them if we're going to do any of this, if we're going to allow this stuff in our community. We have to have guarantees from the parent company as well as the special purpose entity that's going to protect us, in that they're going to say, we're, we're going to cover the cost of having to fight that fire 24/7, and we're going to, and we're going to cover the cost to clean it up too. Because otherwise, they file bankruptcy and they walk away on that special purpose entity, and all the money just passes through it. So that's my main concern right now, is that we, we have to protect our community. And if we don't tie these things, if we don't put these requirements in place, you know, we, we're not doing our job as a council or as a community. We have to protect our community, we have to protect our citizens.
As of, as of, as of right now, our, our response model to this type of hazard is we're going to initially respond, we're going to do what we can, and then we are going to turn it over to the occupant or the owner of those batteries, along with, you know, we're going to be contacting ADEQ, Water Quality, Arizona Water Quality, Arizona Corporation Commission, along with numerous other legislative and enforcement armed bodies that regulate this industry. So obviously, we won't be, the, our fire department will not be babysitting this for days on days on days. We'll initially respond, and then once we've determined that it's not going any farther than what it is, then we're going to turn it over to the outside agencies.
Okay. Anything else? It's a public hearing. Does anybody else have anything they want to add?
Mayor, I had two requests, public requests. First one is Don Jennings.
Okay.
Hello, Mayor and Councilman, I'm Don Jennings. I live at 1272 West Pinkley Avenue here in Coolidge. I know this is kind of like, we're just, it's about language in the code, but like, it's like a slippery slope to me. If you equate those battery storage facilities with a solar panel, like, there's homes, there's farms, you know, not that far away from those. So to me, a solar panel in a, you know, field of solar panels is not the same as these battery storage units. And once it's equated in code to the same thing as a solar panel in a field, like, I don't know, I feel like it should have its own solar battery storage unit overlay, you know, that's even farther from homes, and, you know, its own separate zoning instead of just being included. I don't feel like our fire department should have to, like, bear this burden. We're a small town, and like, what is the benefit to our community as well? Like, we're doing all this work, putting all these things in there, what is being contributed to our community? They, when we've, I've attended these before, they say that they'll provide, you know, 40 jobs for two months or a small amount of property sales tax. Like, we're going through all this for 40 jobs for a couple of months, you know? Like, let's make it safe for our community, let's make sure that a battery storage unit is not being equated with the same as solar panels. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, our next speaker is Rebecca Walker.
Hi, Chairman, and members of the council, thank you for letting me speak. My name's Rebecca Walker. I live at 758 West Pima Avenue here in Coolidge. I have a lot of concerns about what I saw, but most of all, my concern is, I've come to love Coolidge in the few years that we've been living here now, and I have lots of family that live here in the area, and I want to continue to enjoy a healthy, safe community for my grandkids to grow up in and to build their homes in for the future. And I don't want to see some kind of toxic dilemma hanging over people's head and our kids' head when they, as they grow up. That doesn't seem a fair decision to me. And when we start changing coding and, and allow this to be part of the existing code, I think we've kind of already surrendered control over what's going to happen. And so, again, on behalf of a pro-Coolidge stance, we should not have this language, and if there is some kind of already understanding and agreement that I was kind of getting a little whiff of, that we can't back out of or say no to batteries, I think that needs to be revised. My second concern here is this. I understand there's a lot of push coming out of national agendas and out of the White House and et cetera for these environmental companies and sources to really put a big, huge monetary push, I mean, hundreds of millions of dollars to push this out into communities as rapidly as possible before a new administration begins to take over and make some other regulatory changes. I don't think we know enough about battery safety. I think it's a constantly changing thing, and if you codify it, then, and say, oh, we'll make adjustments as we go, we're just already giving in to the, you know, for the future. We don't know the toxicity level, and to say we're going to let this fire burn out, contaminate our water, our plants... communities as rapidly as possible before a new administration begins to take over and make some other regulatory changes. I don't think we know enough about battery safety. I think it's a constantly changing thing, and if you codify it, then, and say, oh, we'll make adjustments as we go, we're just already giving in to the oh, for the future. We don't know the toxicity level, and to say, we're gonna let this fire burn out, contaminate our water, our plants, our animals and our families and homes, I think that sounds crazy. That's not something I'm real happy about. But again, I think there's a lot of money at stake here. There are a lot of huge corporations pushing this downward into small communities like this. I don't want ours to be one that bears the brunt of things that we don't know how they're gonna impact us in a negative way. There are a lot of other good resources, a lot of other good energy that can be investigated. And frankly, things like nuclear energy has had a lot more safety built into it than ion, lithium ion batteries do at this point. So I just urge caution. I don't see why this can't be tabled till after a new federal administration takes over and we begin to unpack some of what's going on in these environmental industries that is not always upfront and forthright for communities like ours. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jackie Hendry Henry, 444 West Seago. My question is, I'm really not for the batteries. I don't care for the solar. But what happens if it is not approved tonight and somebody comes in tomorrow and wants to put something in?
Thank you for the question, it's Mayor, Councilmembers and Ms. Henry, Henry. It'll be like last time when we had, they used the utility, the attorneys were saying that was correct to go put it in the, under the utility building, storage categories and all the zoning districts. So it would be, they would, they would apply for that like they did last time. And this way, we could put them someplace where we know everybody wanted them before, but we'd be fairly open. So, I don't know, we, we couldn't stop them. So, still have to go through a process, I believe, like we did last time. So, that would be the case. We thought it was, this was the best way to contain them quickly and then put them in a certain place and then work towards creating the rules, you know, so. That's, that's why we, we brought it to you, as, as quick as we could.
So, Mayor, I guess my next question is, if it is approved, in the motion, can we, or can you guys, put in there about what Councilmember Bagnall was talking about, the, you know, for cleanup and, and that kind of stuff? Can that go ahead and be put in the motion?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we could put that in. I mean, we could, I mean, I think it could be the direction we see from council that if it was to approve this ordinance and at the same time give direction that any major site plan would have to deal with the cleanup if there is a, if there is some type of fire and provide guarantees sufficient, you know, to the city of Coolidge that an entity has the financial wherewithal to pay for any type of loss like that.
I think that's correct. And I also think that, I find it hard to believe that somewhere in, in the world, there isn't somebody that has looked at this and has maybe a, a group in their, in their organization that comes and fights these things, or they're set up or they're ready to handle an emergency. But I think we need to take a closer look at, at what we're requiring these companies to do. Because we're gonna continue to get requests, and we're gonna continue to be tied up dealing with them, so we need to get prepared. And so if we table this thing and take another look at, at what we want, you know, what, how we're gonna handle it, what we need to throw back on the people that wanna do it and say, well, you know, we'll consider it, but you need to do this, this and this, maybe that'll help us out a little bit. Because there've been some good points brought up, and I think we probably need to, to take care of some of that before we move forward with, with this. That's, that's my opinion. So... Anybody else have anything they wanna throw in here for, oh, guy from Maricopa?
Mayor and Council, I agree 100% about the I met with a battery storage company today, and every one of your concerns was every one of my concerns. There's a future project coming possibly to the Hidden Valley Thunderbird Farms outside the city of Maricopa. My first question was, what are you gonna do about the fire? What are you gonna do about the neighboring? So, my suggestions to every single one of those questions was exactly what Tom and every one of you are concerned about, was, I wanna block wall around it. Now, do I want a block wall around it? I want guarantees that the cleanup will be, because right away, they said, well, the smoke goes up. Well, if there's a wind going north, southeast or west, that wind's gonna take it to somebody's house, which is 150 feet away, and if they need to be evacuated, that house now has to be evacuated and then cleaned up. So, some of the suggestions I made to them, if I ever have to approve something like this in the future, that all these stipulations are gonna have to be put in if I'm voting on something like this. And they agreed with me 100%. They actually wrote it down and put it in writing that if this comes to the Board of Supervisors in the future, that this would be some of my stipulations. So, Tom, you're on the right track, the council, you guys are on the right track. You just tell them what you want. And they had no problems with it today. We'll see if they have a problem with it when they come to bring it to P and Z. So, just wanted you to know, I did meet with one today who just called me out of the blue and said, this is a project possibly could be coming to the Hidden Valley Thunderbird Farms area. So, you can ask for what you want, and I suggested.
Well, I see, I saw that, I read that, and I see they're gonna have a big problem. I would tell you, I'm the, the chairman of the Sun Quarter MPO, and every year, we, well, we have trouble passing the equality requirements, Pinell County does in general.
Correct.
And it's becoming a problem. So even if the smoke goes straight up, it doesn't really matter. I mean, wherever the smoke goes, it still gets, you know, they still have the testers and you still get nailed. So the bottom line is, is we still have the problem.
And their numbers are saying it dissipates very quickly, and I'm saying, I'm not an expert in it, but again, I agree with you guys on where you're going down. And this has been the situation that I've been dealing with for the last year to my running for election, that this is what I've been going through. So, these are the exact same questions I've asked, not only for the city of Maricopa, but for Hidden Valley Thunderbird Farms, and I would ask the same for you guys. So, just wanted to give you a heads up that it just so happened, they called me last week to ask me to meet with them, because they know I'm gonna be the current supervisor in that district, and I'm letting them know, this is what I want, and this is what I know the people are gonna want. So, keep doing what you're doing, you'll get what you want. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor. So anyway, I think, I mean, we probably need to look at what other places are doing. There's gotta be somebody that's doing something more than I, I really think that we can, we can require them to do a lot more. And, and as far as cost goes, if, if they're willing to, if they wanna come out here and do it, and we want, and we're gonna authorize them to do it, they do need to pay their share. You know, Bright Industries paid for theirs when they were having all those problems before they changed ownership.
Right.
They paid all their cost.
Right.
All right, anybody have anything else? It's a public hearing. Okay. Then we'll move out of the public hearing and move into approval of minutes, discussion and action, item seven, City Council Regular Meetings for November 12th, 2024, and item eight, City Council Regular Meeting, November 25th, 2024. Does anybody have any corrections, discussion, any of that? If not, I look for a motion to approve.
Mayor Thompson, I move to approve minutes of the regular meeting in November 12th, 2024, and regular meeting in November 25th, 2024.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, all favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post? Okay, that carries. We'll move into business items for consent. Okay, does anybody, there's a, there's a number of items. Does anybody want any of these pulled off up here for individual consideration?
Mayor Thompson, item 16, just got a quick question on it when it comes
All right. Anybody else? Okay. Let me take a shot, and here we go. All right, item nine. Consider approval of street closures for the annual Martin Luther King Jr. March being Monday, January 20th, 2025. Item 10. Consider approval of entering into a reimbursement agreement between the city of Coolidge and Union Pacific Railroad for preliminary engineering services for the design and engineering of the Erika Road Railroad crossing in the estimated amount of $40,000, and authorizing the mayor to sign the necessary documents. Item 11. Consider approval of entering into a cooperative purchasing agreement between the city of Coolidge and Empire Machinery to purchase a 2023 MF4710 4CL Massey Ferguson tractor and Woods mower deck for the Coolidge Airport for an amount not to exceed $96,608, authorizing the mayor to sign the necessary documents. Item 12. Consider award of bid to OnDeck Sports in the amount of $37,315.12 to purchase bleachers for the Coolidge Parks and Recreation Department, and approval to enter into an agreement for the purchase of bleachers between the city of Coolidge and OnDeck Sports for the purpose of purchasing five portable indoor bleachers and four event bleachers. Item 13. Consider approval of entering into an intergovernmental agreement between Ochene Indian Community and the city of Coolidge in connection with the acceptance of grant funds in the amount of $29,677.11 for the use toward the cost of purchasing 12 AEDs for the Coolidge Public Works Department. Item 14. Consider approval of entering into an intergovernmental agreement between the Ochene Indian Community and the city of Coolidge in connection with acceptance of Proposition 202 grant funds awarded from the Ochene Indian Community in the amount of $149,124.13 to purchase three LifePak monitor defibrillators for the Coolidge Fire Department. Item 15. Resolution number 24-30. Resolution of the mayor and the city council of the city of Coolidge, Arizona, authorizing the submission of an application for FY 2024 state housing funds, which may include federal funding through the Home Investment Partnership Program for state housing funds, certifying that said application meets the community previously identified housing and community development needs and requirements of the state housing programs, and authorizing all actions necessary to implement to complete the activity and complete the activities outlined in said application. Item 17. Consider approval of entering into a First Amendment to Memorandum of Lease Agreement between the city of Coolidge and International Air Response, Inc., along with approval to enter into a landlord's consent and a stopple agreement between the city of Coolidge, Arizona Bank and Trust, and International Air Response, Inc., for the purpose of accommodating the tenant to acquire financing towards improvements and expansions of their business based on sitting on property leased at the Coolidge Municipal Airport. Item 18. Consider approval of entering into a memorandum of lease agreement between the city of Coolidge and Sky Flight Services, LLC, along with the approval to enter into landlord's consent and a stopple agreement between the city of Coolidge, Arizona Bank and Trust, and Sky Flight Services, LLC, for the purpose of accommodating the tenant to acquire financing towards improvements and expansions of their business based on sitting on property leased at the ci, at the Coolidge Municipal Airport. And item 19. Consider approval of the claims for the month of November, 2024. Okay, if there's, if there's nothing to add, I need a motion to act on those items.
Mayor Thompson, I move to approve consent items nine through 15 and 17, 18 and 19 as spread.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, normal.
Okay, Councilmember Gillespie? It's either yes or no for the resolution?
Yes.
Councilmember Murrieta?
Yeah.
Councilmember Cho?
Yes.
Councilmember Bagnall?
Yes.
Councilmember Sabadra?
Yes.
And Mayor Thompson?
Yes. Thank you. Item 16. Consider approval to submit a grant application to the 2024 Assistance to Firefighters Grant Program for a grant in the amount not to exceed $2,300, $3,992.37 to purchase a new aerial platform truck, the Coolidge Fire Department, that will require a 5% match, which is approximately
Mayor Thompson, Councilmembers, I'll answer any questions that you may have on this.
Yeah, Chief Dillon, I think it's great if we could get a $2 million fire engine for 100,000. And I'm just wondering, what are the odds of getting that grant? I mean, what, what would you consider our odds of getting that grant?
About 3%.
3%? Okay.
And that, that's a national average.
But you gotta try.
It's not just for us. It's, that's across the board. About, about 3% of the vehicle acquisition grants through this grant program get approved.
Okay. All right, that was my only question.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Well, Chief, I don't know if it's worth asking any more questions if we've only got a 3% shot, but I will, I do, I would like to know, when I look at the terms of they, they wanna pay for this and all that, I just think that it takes, and it takes 45 to 50 months after the contract is verified or ratified by the council. It takes 45 to 50 months to get
To build it.
Yeah.
Yes.
So you won't have, you won't have it until we're, you know, some of us
There's, there's several factors that go into how long, depends on which manufacturer to go with. Some manufacturers have less build times, but you're still looking minimum, minimum, probably 18 to 24 months before the vehicle's actually delivered.
And I guess if, if you got it, I mean, there's a lot of option, payment options and a lot of apparently bonuses and knockoffs here and there on that thing, but you'd have to decide that if you got it, I guess.
Correct.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? All right, I look, need, need a
Mayor Thompson, I move to approve consent item 16 as presented.
Second.
Motion, a second, all favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, motion carries. Okay, we'll move into business, regular items. Number 20, ordinance number 24-14, an ordinance of the city of Coolidge, Arizona, amending Article, what, nine, section 906, industrial solar facility overlay zone, and Article nine, section 702, general industrial, the city of Coolidge zoning code, adding battery storage as a conditionally permitted use. I think we kind of decided we were gonna do something other than vote yea or nay on this.
Yes, Mayor, you could either table it, or continue it, or deny it, I guess.
And Mayor Thompson, I would prefer that we continue it at this time. Because rather than go ahead and, if we're going to approve it, I know that the main idea of this is that then we isolate, that they can't put these anywhere outside of the current areas that are approved under the overlay. But at the same time, I just feel that it, it's maybe just a little bit premature at this time, until we have some stipulations, conditions or whatever in place that are gonna protect the community from any, you know, from, well, from health problems or any, and otherwise, and monetary problems if we have an issue with one of these, that we might as well just wait until we have it all ready to go at one time, and rather than approve this tonight and then have to come back and add to it or, and revisit it again, let's just do it all at one time. So at, with that, I just, if it's the council's pleasure, I'd like to go ahead and move to, do, to table or continue? move to, do, to table or continue.
Mr. Mayor, councilmember Bagnell, I, I would just table it for now. I think the one message that got communicated to staff from council was that in the interim, if one of these facilities comes forward, uh, council's main concern is they want to understand the safety aspects, want to understand who's financially liable and how do we guarantee that they're going to be able to cover any losses, any charges to the city. So I think that got communicated clearly to staff tonight so they know what's important if one of these comes up in the interim. But I would, I would table it and, um, we can see whether we're in a position to have a work session or, uh, uh, you know, or potentially an executive session about what our potential options are going forward at the first meeting in January.
I think you, you're probably right, Dennis. I think tabling it's probably, excuse me, the way, the way to go. Um, I think it satisfies what some of the public wanted and I also believe that it doesn't tell planning and zoning that we don't value what they did. Um, but I do think that we need to, there's some good points were brought up and we do need to consider what we're going to do about paying for something if something goes wrong. And I know there's some changes that I wanted to make a long time ago on some of the solar items. I think we could throw that in there too, but we can bring it back when we're ready. And I think they need to do some, some research and.
And, and I think, uh, Mr. Mayor, councilmember Bagnell, if you do make the motion to table, maybe it would be table it until, uh, council has an opportunity to discuss the safeguards and financial guarantees that can be put in place, uh, moving forward. So at least gives a, so it's not table till the next meeting, but table till we have an opportunity to present you with those options.
Okay.
Whoever makes the motion, I guess they ought to put that in there and let's.
Okay, uh, so how, how, how do you want me to make that motion again, Mr. Bisho?
I think I just motioned to table, uh, until council has an, uh, opportunity to discuss in more detail, uh, the safeguards for these type of battery facilities, both, uh, the fire safeguards, but also the financial guarantee safeguards, and that we can bring it back at that time once we can present those options to council.
Okay. So moved.
There you go. Okay. Are you ready?
Did you get a second? I didn't hear.
Oh, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Okay.
They voted on it?
Take a roll though?
No, no, they, they.
No, we need to roll call.
They voted to table?
Yep. You don't need a roll call for.
We just need to, uh, just, if you want to just ask all those in favor and.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We're legal? Legals we're going to get. All right. Item 21. Consider approval to appoint a member of the council to serve as the city's vice mayor for a two.
Mayor Thompson, I'd like to nominate councilmember Tatiana Murrieta for vice.
I second that.
Dennis, the past.
Was there a motion and second? Okay. You can, you can ask if there's any other motions.
Is there any other nominations? There's motion and a second. All, yep, it's a voice vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. It solves it. All right. And I guess that's report from the, uh, mayor and council. I think I'm going to start down here with, uh, one of our newest members.
All right.
Councilmember Bisho, do you have anything to, uh, to mention?
Just one item, uh, and it's getting kind of late in the season, but I'd just like to mention that I still don't see holiday lights in South Coolidge. Been a problem for a number of years now. We had them up for maybe two years, a while ago. It's over 10 years ago. And I'd just like to at least get an answer as to why they're not up and, uh, what we can, what we can look forward to in the future. In my opinion, the business district runs from Walmart down to the galloping goose. And we're not talking about just a few extra blocks down here. I mean, there's areas that have lights on them on Central and Coolidge Avenue that probably don't need lights on them because at nighttime, nobody's there. But, uh, just something to talk about.
I, I think they, they know the reason why. They think it has to do with plugs and there's different.
Well, I know, so how can we? Things like that. I, I don't know.
I think they're working on it. You guys are working on it, aren't you?
Mayor, yes, we, Ricky and I have talked about it and, and trying to get the plugs fixed. And no, we, we just fixed them on the other, we had poles that were, didn't have the plugs working, so we fixed those and Ricky still has, uh, some more to put up, but we don't have the south because it's by a different utility company.
Sure is, yeah.
And they've never, so we're trying to contact, uh, Johnny Federico at Skip to see if they'll put those up, but they, they haven't. And I know you have one pole in front of you, your store, your old store.
I'm not there anymore, but, yeah.
So, so, yeah, no, we, we've talked about that and we're trying to find a solution and.
Thank you.
For sure, we'll add some more to the budget to add more lights.
Yeah, we put them up now, they take them down. So it's no bueno.
That, that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you, sir. Vice mayor? There's another new guy. Councilmember? Tom?
Oh, I just want to let everybody know that we had a fly-in this last weekend. It looks like our numbers are finally, uh, after COVID hit, we really went down on the numbers out there, but it looks like we're starting to come back now. We had about 2:30 breakfast that we served out there on Saturday and we had a good crowd. People, not just planes coming in, but a lot of people showed up on motorcycles and, and just out for a nice morning and got a good breakfast. So want to thank everybody there, looking forward to the light parade this.
Friday, right?
Yeah, this Friday. And as long as we don't make it a spectacle like the city of Casa Grande does with the thousands of lawn chairs, you know, lining the streets and everything, I'll tell you, that is something else. When you go in and look at that, and I just, and I was talking to a lady and I, and she's told me, she said, I can't believe this. And I said, I said, one thing you could do, if you had some old furniture that you wanted to get rid of, you could go put it out there on the boulevard and then just don't, don't go back and get it. And she said, you know, that's not a bad idea. So, but anyway, uh, but look forward to the light parade and everything else. It's going to be bigger and better. It is almost every year. And, um, just since this is our last meeting, it was one of which, before the holiday break, I want to wish everybody happy holidays.
I, I think I heard my fellow councilmember tell everybody to claim their seats early and abandon furniture along our parade route. I'm just, I'm just saying that I think that's what he's endorsing. Um, but yeah, I hope to see everybody on Friday. I think it's going to be great, but I've got nothing else.
Thank you, Gilbert.
Mayor, councilmembers, I just have a couple of things, uh, on, uh, Friday, it's important also a public message. On Friday, December 6th, we had a report of natural gas leaking behind the post office. And, uh, councilmember Bagnell called me and told me they were out there just telling people not to go in this, into the building, but there was no fire personnel or police. So I called Commander Tassero, he went out, talked to Southwest Gas, we'd, by that time, secured the, the area, but then we sent out a text, my gov, to everybody telling them, don't go in the building so that, uh, but we want to remind everybody, if you, like the commercial says, if you smell something, it's like rotten eggs and, uh, it's not your cooking, then I think you need to call the fire department because they'll, they'll turn off the gas and they'll call Southwest Gas right. And in case there's a, you know, something that nicks it, it, you know, then it can be tragic, you know? You have a big fire explode. They were still out there three days later, they're still digging out in the alley. So there was, it wasn't just like the meter that was hit, something was leaking underground pretty, pretty seriously. So I just want to put that out there for the public. And, uh, also the, uh, Cotton Patchers did a, provided PD, fire, uh, the county attorney's office and Hope Women's Center with quilts for victims and all, quite a few. So that was really a good thing. And, uh, they provided those, the little ceremony they did during the week and, and it was, uh, very much appreciated by all the people that are going to get those quilts and, and all that. Really nice. Um, also Arizona Water wanted me to publicly thank the mayor. Mayor did a letter, uh, that was called Why the 100 Year Assured Water Supply is Critical for Coolidge. And this, this, uh, letter got viewed by most, more than anything else that was published. It was the Capital Times, it says, Who Closed the ADAS? And it was Capital Times, Phoenix Business Journal, and the Pinellas Central, uh, quoted mayor in all these different. And so according to, uh, Arizona Water, this is really what pushed it over the top to get approved. So they, the governor's, uh, task force approved having assured water and having a process to be able to get more water using, um, like, just for example, like wastewater, it treated wastewater and you can use it to give you credits. And so there's different ways to do it. And so, but this is a big step because we, we really need this for other development. So I just want to share that. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you, Gilbert. Yeah, I attended a, uh, meeting, uh, actually Ben was with me, I attended a meeting on the Phoenix Tucson, um, passenger rail corridor, which, uh, they've, they've got a lot of money to do that study. So it looks, that looks pretty promising. And I was one of the 230 plus, or I don't know if it was that many, whatever Tom said it was, out there at the fly-in. So it was probably the best one I've seen in a long time.
Yeah.
I mean, there was actually planes and people.
Yeah.
There's always a zillion motorcycles. So that's it. Need a motion to get out of here. Oh, everybody have a Merry Christmas. We won't be back until next year. So.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Merry Christmas, everybody.